Also mailed to the petitioner last week. So I will turn it over to Lauren, too.
And?
As we get started, can I ask each of the board members to introduce themselves?
Yeah. Sure. I'm Danielle Bailey, Vice President of the Board.
I'm Katie Avalon,司法 clerk.
Hi, Chris Robinson, Assistant Clerk.
Hi, Carla Fletcher. Is Carla?
Oh, wait. One second. Could you record that?
Our Board President is sick.
I think that makes she's trying to. Can I make sure because he needs to stay. No, it's on. I'd have to pause.
She's on Zoom. Okay. So Carla Pennington Cross is present.
Um, Carla's on Zoom and you are for sure recorded.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
The criteria are set forth in Wisconsin Statute 11715 in making any decision under Section 1728117132. The school board and field panels are considered the following factors. As they affect the educational welfare of all children residing in the affected school districts, you may consider other appropriate factors. Number one, geographical and topographical characteristics of the affected school districts, including the estimate to travel time through and from school to people in school districts. The educational needs of all children residing in the affected school districts, the educational programs currently offered by each affected school district, and the ability and commitment of each school district to meet those needs and continue to offer those educational programs. Number three, if territory is proposed to be detached from one school district and attached to an adjoining school district, or proposed to be included in a new school district under Section 117105, whether the proposed attachment will have any adverse effect on the program currently offered by the school district from which the territory is proposed to be attached, including both curricular and extracurricular aspects of that program. Number four, the testimony of and written statements filed by the residents of the affected school districts. Number five, the estimated fiscal impact of the proposed reorganization on the affected school districts, including the effect of the apport- portionment of the assets and liabilities. Number six, whether the proposed reorganization will make any part of the school district's territory non-contiguous. Number seven, the socioeconomic level and ratio composition of pupils who reside or will reside in territory proposed to be detached from one school district and attached to an adjoining school district in territory proposed to be included in a new school district under Section 117105, or in school districts proposed to be consolidated, or in school district proposed to be dissolved. The proportion of peoples who reside in such territory who are children at risk as defined under Section 118153 sub 1 sub A, and the effect of pupils describing this paragraph will have on the present and future socioeconomic level and racial composition of the affected school districts, now the proportion of the affected school districts enrollment that will be children at risk. Number eight, the results of any referendum under Section 11710. And number nine, in reaching a decision, the school board may consider and weigh other appropriate factors as needed. Before taking testimony, I'd like to review the rules applicable to this hearing. It's an informal hearing, but we will record all the information presented. Each person offering information will come to the come to the table where you may sit or stand, state your name, address, and the school district of your residence. Speak clearly so that we can be sure of your information being recorded. The procedure is to hear from the proponents and opponents of petition. The proponents, those asking the school board to transfer the territory, will be heard first. Following the proponents, the opponents of petition, those people who do not wish the territory to be transferred will be heard. Following the initial presentation by the opponents and the opponents, there will be a short time allocated for rebuttal or summation by both sides in the same order as before. This time, the proponents of petition can proceed with their presentation.
Can I plug in a USB stick for my laser pointer?
Into?
Uh, whenever computer's presenting, so then like I can click through the slides.
Would you slide over here? For the boardroom?
I'll go get my dongle.
Yeah, I'm gonna need it. A tattoo for that. Yeah, I'm gonna get a tattoo back for that.
This one?
Oh, here. Oh, you're.
Okay.
All right.
There you go.
Diana, point of order, if Carla wants to interact, is she able to? Um, or does she need to like type questions?
I can open up her audio to talk.
Can you be put on just to make sure she participates?
That.
I, I think I'm unmuted now.
Carla, are you able to?
Okay, uh, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
I don't know that the. Okay. Come on.
Uh, okay, maybe.
It doesn't appear to be recognized.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on. It's okay, we have the.
Oh, there we go. It's working.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Andrew Holstrom and we currently reside in the Glendale River Hills School District.
And your address?
Uh, 1045 West Kellie Met Road, River Hills, Wisconsin, 53217. Dash, six, zero, zero. Um, so, so thank you, uh, my holder.
Yeah.
Uh, for hearing us out today. So by no means, uh, do I work for the DPI, right? So we did our best to provide information based on what was publicly available. Uh, so, right, I would do fact-check our facts and DPI has probably got more information than we do. So the detachment and attachment of small territory initiated by owner, um, that we're proposing is located right here between the adjoining school districts of Glendale River Hills and Indian Hill. Um, we'll get a little closer and see the specifics in a minute. So just gonna cover some quick things. Wisconsin State's Statute 11712, Section 2 for qualification. Introductions of the Holstrom family, um, some misleading maps that we encountered that are causing this. Um, and criteria for reorganization, which you ran through. And a summary, and if we have time, any questions anybody has. So to qualify for this type of petition, uh, we had to be less than seven percent of the equalized valuation of the school district, um, which based on my research, we are. And then you need a 50% of elector's signatures. To file a petition, we got 100% of the electors in the, the resident proposed territory. Um, so the affected homes are five single family. Um, currently there are zero public school families and pupils. Uh, the future would be, uh, two from the Holstrom house and one from the Kegel Bosco house. Um, so two families, three pupils. Uh, the remainder of the residents or electors are retired or homeschooled. So I'm not gonna read this word for word, uh, but we're the Holstroms. We moved to the area in 2022, uh, from Milwaukee, hoping to get a, a little more room for our growing family and an improved school district from one we were currently in. Right, we like to be outside, ride our bikes, not as much as them. Um, but yeah, we, uh, when we looked for a home, we were really focused on a better school district and getting some more space. So we found that, um, and based on our homelessness, we did some research on the school district, which was listed as Mapledale Indian Hill. And that's what we made our decision on buying this house based off of. Um, upon reaching out to that school district for K4 programs, um, trying to get ahead of the curve for our two and a half year old. Um, we were notified that we were in the Glendale River Hills School District. Um, and that's kind of what prompted us down this road to look into things. Um, the offerings, where the district boundaries are, et cetera. Um, yeah, so those are our two boys, Forrest and Leo. Uh, and you can't see our dog. Um, so our two main goals were to find a curriculum that supports a French language. Um, so that's because Isabel is from Quebec. Uh, for those of you that don't know, that's a province in Canada, um, that outside of Montreal primarily speaks French. So for her family and my family, um, it's really critical for us to keep that as part of our family interaction and culture. I think there's three of us that speak English primarily, um, but we're trying to learn. And the rest of the family speaks French, including the cousins and siblings of Isabel's brothers and sisters. So, and then the other one is independence, uh, and ultimately safety. Um, so we grew up in the nineties, um, where riding your bike to a friend's house and walking around at night was still safe, uh, or considered safe. And so for us, we really want our kids to be able to ride their bike to their friend's house or walk, whether it's one way or both ways, and not have to worry about it, um, in the sense of crossing a major road. So our current location, the next road south and where a majority of the Glendale River Hills School District is, crosses Good Hope Road. Um, so there's a little strip of Pheasant Road and a little strip of River Road, um, that are within this, the current district. So misleading public maps, um, we definitely had to go through more than one page of Google to find the actual ones, um, and ultimately found the correct ones on the DPI's website. Um, but these were the ones that were provided with our home, um, which we have linked in the appendix. Um, and the area circled in blue are, well, that's not working, where the proposed territory is. So you covered the criteria for district reorganization, so we'll hit through those. We got the resident testimony. So geographical and topographical characteristics. Went down the rabbit's hole a bit on this one. It's two feet total elevation change. Uh, I found out from looking at prior examples, uh, from DPI, that's not what they're talking about.
It's still present.
It's, uh, it's, it's the distance to school, so it's just about the same, um, for both districts. Um, six minutes driving for everything, which is kind of interesting. And point two miles, so not really anything shorter, uh, for the proposed change. Animation. Uh, educational needs, um, so no, no big things here aside from a language exploration, uh, that we'll cover. Um, so Glendale River Hills, you guys are probably well aware of this. Curriculum is ever-changing to adapt to the uh, it says it on there, oh, society and their crimes of the state and the needs of the students they serve. Uh, the academic standards can be found via the link here. And then we have the Mapledale Indian Hill School District, uh, which for grades six, seven, and eight offers a language exploration program. Uh, so that is not like taking a Spanish class. Um, it is more of an exploratory uh, course, right? So you're learning about where the language come from, what it is. Uh, and the thing that really stood us, out to us with this was that it's not only French, uh, but Canadian French or the Québécois, as, uh, Isabel's family calls it. For those of you that don't know, it's essentially the equivalent to the difference of Spanish between Spain and Mexico. Um, so friends in Quebec. Um, and we found that in the lesson plan, uh, criteria for grade six, seven, and eight. Showing example of eighth grade. And I'm gonna pass it over to the Kegel Bosco family.
Uh, I'll stand over there too, I guess. Uh, we have a very similar story.
Oh, name?
Oh, my name is, my name is Amelia Kegel. I am married to Tyson Bosco and we are talking about our child, Dolly Bosco today. Uh, we reside in Glendale Hills School District and our address is 1005 West Kelly Met Road, uh, River Hills, Wisconsin, 53217, whatever you said. Um, but yeah, so, uh, we decided to move three years ago and the joke was, were we going to close on our house or was I going to pop out a baby first? All right, but, uh, looking for a house in, uh, the post-COVID time was very difficult. Um, Tyson and I really were looking at a place that we could have, you know, an amazing school system and similar to the Holstroms, which is why we've become such good friends, is we like our time outdoors. Uh, we found this road, Kelly Met Road, which I grew up in Milwaukee. I never knew this street existed, uh, and it's our little piece of paradise. Um, though it may not seem important to many people, it's very important to us that we can, uh, bike our kid to school. So our family owns Wayland Sprocket, we're a bike advocacy and, you know, business organization here in Milwaukee. Uh, and I don't think many people do this, but I literally was plotting out like the courses to school before we were buying the house. Um, yeah, and we actually were looking at a house on Larkspur. We landed on this Kelly Met one because it gave us a sunny acre that we could garden on, uh, so that one won. Uh, but anyways, a huge portion of why we purchased this, uh, like property was to be able to go to the school system. I've been getting flyers from, uh, Indian Hills since we moved in. Um, and it literally wasn't to my attention that we were going to this school system and told, and Isabel told me that. I was like, what? I think we would have like honestly just marched up day one thinking we were going to Indian Hill. Um, so anyways, I really like, I believe in amazing primary education. I just wanna like, I wanted to actually start with this by saying like, thank you guys, like good school systems don't happen on their own. Like it is people that help do this. Um, and just being a parent, it's like, I feel like I, it's my duty to try to make sure that our kid goes to the best opportunities possible for them. Um, yeah, I really appreciate this opportunity to talk, but it's like, I would say we bought this house outside of our price range to go to a school that I thought we were going to go to, so. That's what I got. Thank you.
All right. Rolling back into it, uh, again, I am by no means a professional in this, uh, but I did the best I could with the publicly available tax information from 2024. Uh, and for the five effective parcels, the total impact, uh, going to the school district was $8,047.86. And that's, I don't know, uh, the the criteria was programs and offerings, but I'm aware of what that is. Uh, so five, contiguous or non-contiguouses. So that means sharing a common border or touching. Uh, so the, this is the current state of West Kellie Met Road. Um, so the first circle here is our mailbox, uh, Glendale River Hills School District. The second mailbox here is our neighbors, which is Indian Hill, Maple Dale. Um, so, right, you can kind of get where our confusion came from, um, with this whole situation. Uh, and just the area view of the proposed territory a little bit closer is right here, uh, for the five parcels. And Model Stanmore popped up there a couple of weeks ago. I'm not really sure what it is. Uh, but, yeah, anyway, uh.
No, I don't. I, uh, just, could you go back to the past year eight thousand?
Yep.
Could you just quickly tell us how you calculated that?
Yeah, so there is a I would have to pull it up, but if you had, do you have a pull-up I can?
Your presentation?
No, the, uh, parcel information?
No.
No. It's all good. So basically there is a set number you pay on the bill and then there's a deduction credit. Um, and so the first number minus the second number, uh, and add it up for the five parcels, so it's how I got to this one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Do you guys know if that's correct? Kind of, okay.
I'll, I'll address it.
Okay, but that's what we pay on our tax bill. Um, all right, so continuing on, um, socioeconomic and racial composition. Uh, this was data I found on US report data, uh, which we have linked in the appendix. And so again, just doing the best with what we know, uh, minority enrollment before and after shown here. And that was calculated by subtracting or adding the three pupils based on being Caucasian by question. Um, so certainly I'm sure the DPI is a different way to calculate it. Um, but the total impact in Mapledale Indian Hills, point seven seven, and Glendale River Hills is zero point three, so both less than one percent. And then the economically disadvantaged did not have pupil count. Um, so I wasn't really sure to calculate that one, um, but no, our three kids, uh, would not be applying for those programs as of today. Um, and then referendums that have passed or not passed, I believe was the other one. So good news, uh, both school districts had passed referendums. Um, you guys know about the two-year, nine million dollar one, so congratulations, we certainly voted yes, if I can say that. But Indian Hill, Maple Dale then passed a 1.75 million recurring. So, good job, public education. And yeah, so that's our summary. Um, again, thank you guys. That's my household nickname and mommy, McMommy Supreme, you can find on the menu at McDonald's. But yeah, so I grew up, uh, both my parents, public school teachers, so I get that it, uh, the job certainly doesn't stop after three. Um, so thanks for allowing us to present and consider this. And I don't know if now's the time, but we're happy to take any questions.
They're at time, but if you want to take questions.
I think I'll get, you guys want, I think it would make sense to ask now. Do you want to start, Chris?
Yeah.
Oh, do you have any questions though?
Right now.
Oh, okay. Anyone have questions right now?
I, I guess my only question is if you explored open enrollment as an option as opposed to going through this whole process.
Uh, we educate ourselves on it, um, but the thought of one of our kids getting into it and the potential for the other not getting into it, kind of scared us and we figured if we could just put in that for now and do it once, um, we have a better chance of them both going to the same school.
I just have two quick ones, I hope. Has Zillow, was Zillow changed since you moved? Because when I go there, it says schools provided by the listing agent and it lists our district and it lists nearby schools, which are Maple Dale and Nicolay.
So we purchased through Coldwell Bankers, um, and I had that linked here, which, uh, my checkbook still shows, uh, Maple Dale and Indian Hill School.
Okay, and that was the only listing you looked at when you.
Yeah.
Anything you referenced when you moved.
Yeah, I was riding my motorcycle around and stumbled upon an open house.
Um, and then my, just, you mentioned, so French doesn't start in Maple Dale Indian Hills until sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So what, is French a concern for you guys as well? No, it's the bikeability. Um, so if French doesn't start until sixth, seventh, or eighth, what are you planning to do in the meantime to do French? You have to keep the French culture for your kids?
Uh, time with family. We have probably about half of our books and toys are in French. Um, but we believe that like an education is school-wide and parents, you know, it's at home and at school.
Right.
So our goal is to get as much of that as possible.
But it's the middle school French experience that you think is key to your kids? You can, like.
I, I wouldn't say key, I mean, right, I think a lot of the list is gonna be on us, but it's, it supports them learning French and Québécois and understanding it as a language, as part of their culture.
Okay, and I guess my last question, maybe this is a part later, is around, uh, like, is it your position that Glendale River Hills is not an amazing school system? Because that seems to be sort of implied in, um, seeking, uh, better opportunities or a, a different school system for your kids.
Yeah, I apologize if that's how it's perceived, um, but I, we didn't really try to objectively explain this, um, so that wouldn't be the perception. Um, you know, I, that's not the case at all. Um, I think we listed the two criteria, um, objectively, and then, you know, safety and, um, say ambiguity, but like independence.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Can you hear Carla, do you have questions?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me when I'm speaking? Hello?
I just want to confirm, do we have anybody in the audience that plans to present either for or against, besides those in the front row? No? Thank you.
Oh, I think Carla might. She, I don't think we can hear her. She can type the questions. Okay, she's okay.
Diana, are you, um, she's able to project my, if you want me to?
No, again. Well, can you hear me now?
Oh, Sarah, we've been in for Carla.
No, she's good, sorry.
No, we're waiting for Diana to project my presentation.
It's coming, it's coming.
Questions? Oh, okay. Can you get, I can do, I'm coming.
Yeah, there you go.
Want to put forward something for us? All right, so, um, our agenda for tonight, I'm going to cover a little bit of historical background. Um, I also will be looking at the request and who the petitioners are. Um, and then I will also be reviewing the state statutory and criteria for detachment that we've gone over here. Um, I will be, um, summarizing that information and I also will be making a recommendation to the board as well. Um, and so we can proceed with dipping into the historical background. So in 1955, Good Hope, Green Tree, and Riverview consolidated to form the Glendale River Hills School District. Um, from 1956 to 1976, there was, um, construction of Parkway Elementary, Good Hope School, and Glen Hills. And then at that point in time, um, uh, Green Tree School closed in 1976 as the baby boom population started to um, move on from this level of education. Um, residents in the northeast section of Glendale and wards two and three of River Hills attend the Maple Dale Indian Hill School District. So there's a portion of Glendale like you are in that also attends that other district, right? Um, residents in the remaining portion of Glendale and in Ward one of River Hills attend the Glendale River Hills School District. And so I will talk a little bit about probably why that configuration took place. Um, it's clear to note that at one point in time, high school students went outside of districts, found them in Shorewood, until in 1955 when Nicolay opened, and then that became the school that they all attended. Um, municipal boundaries in the state of Wisconsin do not equate school boundaries. Right, so that is just part of the nature and landscape of that, okay? So the request being made is to alter the boundaries for five parcels and households located in the Glendale River Hills School District and allow the River Hills students living on these parcels to attend the Maple Dale Indian Hill School District. So as you can see, um, those are our district boundary maps. As they noted, it is right on the, right on the street that basically divides the boundary between our two school districts. Um, the petitioners are two homeowners in River Hills. There were seven total signatures, um, and two are the petitioners, four resident signatures, because multiple signatures per household. All four residents are confirmed within the GDRH School District and there are at this time zero students. So Wisconsin State Statute Criteria 1 talks about the geographic and topical, topographical characteristics of the affected school district, um, including the estimated time travel, um, for school, um, for pupils in those districts. Um, I took a look at sort of the distance, you saw that it was equidistant in their presentation. I also broke that down for drive, walk, and bike, so you see that all of those times are very comparable. Um, when we think back, and I can stand up over here, um, when we think back and we think about sort of where the property is located, if we think about the fact that our schools sit here, this is Parkway Elementary, their school is here, it's kind of equidistant in between. So you can see maybe why Ward one in particular, which comes down in here in River Hills, was selected to be a part of our district. Okay? Go ahead. Um, Statute Criteria 2, um, speaks about the educational needs of all children residing in the affected school districts, the programming currently offered by each affected school district and the ability and commitment of each school district to meet those needs and continue to offer those programs. Um, right now, Maple Dale Indian Hills students go to school at Indian Um, right now, Maple Dale Indian Hills students go to school at Indian Hill from K four to third grade, they go to Maple Dale School fourth through eighth grade. And then go to Nicolay High School, that same configuration is in the Glendale River Hills School District. So very comparable in terms of how we offer educational programming. A comparison of the curriculum offered at Indian Hill and Parkway, so both schools offer core subjects in E L A math, science, social studies, art, music and physical education. And both schools work together as part of our partner district consortium leading into Nicolay to develop priority standards. And we align our curriculum to prepare students for Nicolay. Parkway includes library and talent development in all grades, while Indian Hill does not. Indian Hill offers counseling, career and focus in human growth and development at selected grades, which are not listed for Parkway. Um, Parkway includes S E L though, which is similar to our counseling in all grades, while Indian Hill has that counseling and career focus instead. It's just called something different, same concept. Okay. Um, both schools, Maple Dale and Glen Hills, offer courses in E L A literacy mathematics, including algebra at eighth grade. Science, social studies, P E, art, music, band orchestra and choir, Spanish, STEAM, technical education and health education. Both schools again work together to develop priority standards to align their learning for our students, to make sure they're receiving equitable curriculum, the same with Nicolay. Um, Maple Dale introduces Spanish as early as fourth grade, while Glen Hills starts in sixth grade. Glen Hills offers German as an additional language option in grade seven and eight, while Maple Dale has a world language option. Um, Glen Hills provides an academic resource center, while Maple Dale offers, um, counseling and career focus. Um, Glen Hills has accelerated math and honors geometry in grade eight, while Maple Dale does not list geometry as an option, although I know they offer, they offer it on site. Our students go to Nicolay to take geometry. Um, financial fitness is unique to Maple Dale in grade seven. Okay. So some important things to note, one of the key, um, components here is the offering of world language. So students in, in Maple Dale Indian Hill in fourth, fifth and sixth grade, they take Spanish with a licensed teacher. Um, starting in seventh grade, they can continue Spanish with a licensed teacher, or they can choose world language. It's important to know that world language uses the Mangle, Mangle Language Platform, which is an online learning platform that can be accessed. And an independent user could purchase that and use it independently, doesn't need to go through a school. Um, it offers seventy languages to study independently. So a teacher is placed in the classroom with students, they manage the classroom in the facility and they facilitate projects that the students do. So typically that's like three days in the Mangle Platform, learning online and two days of project or research work that they do under the supervision of a teacher. Not a world language teacher, but a teacher. Glendale River Hills, students are offered Spanish with a licensed teacher in sixth grade. In instances here where we've had, um, students who have advanced Spanish skills or are talent development teacher. Has worked in setting up independent study with students, um, to do different projects to advance their language skills. And in seventh and eighth grade, students continue Spanish with a licensed teacher, or they can choose German, which is also offered with a licensed teacher who teaches at Nicolay as well. In the instances where students have had advanced German skills, students have accessed online coursework or coursework at Nicolay. So again, we've worked to accommodate our families, we've had students who come in with advanced bilingual, uh, German skills that have gone to the German immersion school. That then were able to continue to develop their skills. Um, both programs, um, that we offer, um, have field trips, language events and also cultural learning opportunities. So to continue on criteria two, um, academically, students who live in River Hills and attend the Glendale River Hills School District score comparably on state standard. Um, when you compare the entire school district, um, um, Maple Dale Indian Hills scores higher than Glendale River Hills School District. But that does not take into account other factors such as student socioeconomic status, students with disabilities or language learners. So here's a breakdown of the forward exam comparison for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and this is taken from the state report card for the districts. Um, and then also some internal, um, vetting of information that we can do with, um, student addresses. So as you can see, um, there's a discrepancy between the overall performance for Maple Dale Indian Hill and Glendale River Hills. But when we look at students entering, um, attending Glendale River Hills who come from the River Hills community. Um, their scores in E L A actually exceed those of Maple Dale Indian Hill. And then, um, they're slightly lower in math, right, but somewhat comparable. Some other factors to consider is that we know that there are risk factors and the state statute talks about that. Um, we have thirty-five percent economically disadvantaged students that attend our school district, while Maple Dale Indian Hill has thirteen point four percent. Um, so, uh, we know that children who grow up in poverty have more academic risks, which explains some of the discrepancy in overall scores. Students with I E Ps, um, nineteen percent and sixteen point seven percent, so we also have slightly more students in our school district to qualify for I E Ps. Um, English language learners is somewhat comparable, um, actually Maple Dale Indian Hill has a few more language learners. So if the territory is proposed, if we're looking at criteria three, um, we wanna determine whether or not there will have any adverse effects. So the removal of five parcels and properties with an estimated value, so if I look at their tax bill, is two million, um, nine hundred thousand dollars. And it has a financial impact that definitely could adversely affect our curricular and extracurricular programming, right? It is not more than seven percent of our total revenue to their point for the criteria, but it is a large amount of money. Um, the missed opportunity for student enrollment, right now, we are currently at thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two and sixty-five cents. For students, also bears a financial impact for our district that can adversely affect curriculum and extracurricular programming. So the petitioners cited the following statement in the December twenty email to me, they, um, that they relocated to their home in River Hills in twenty twenty-two. Um, which as they presented here today and were misinformed during the home buying process. Um, about the school district their address was attached to and are seeking this boundary adjustment because. They want to continue the French Canadian culture and language for their children and they want students to be able to be independent. Um, and might, um, be impacted by potentially not being able to ride a bike or walk to classmates' homes without crossing major roads. So the estimated fiscal effect of the proposed reorganization on the affected school districts includes the following. So the estimated five parcels again is two million, nine hundred thousand dollars. The estimated tax revenue is fifteen thousand and nine dollars. So when you look at your subtraction that you, that you presented in yours, that tax credit is tax credit that comes back to you, but it's money that still comes to us, right? So the per pupil revenue right now that would be lost is zero dollars, cause there are not pupils in school, but the potential would be the thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two. And then the loss of three students actually equates thirty-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-two per year. And over nine years of education, that's a loss of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-two to our district. So they talked about contiguous and non-contiguous, so definitions are up there. So the red arrow, uh, delineates the cutoff of the districts and so they, they are contiguous, so they, they meet the criteria in that area. So again, the socioeconomic and racial composition of peoples who reside or will reside in the territory proposed to be detached from one district and attached to an adjoining district. Or in a school district proposed to be dissolved, again, it's about the effect of the peoples described. Um, will have on present or future socioeconomic and racial composition of the affected school district, of which we would be affected. And on the proportion of the affected school districts enrollments, that would be children at risk. So we move into the next slide. We looked at the fact that we are looking at, um, thirty-five percent of our total student population is, um, economically disadvantaged. While our students from River Hills, um, are ahead of zero percent economically disadvantaged. So, um, definitely is, um, in terms of promoting the diversity of our school community, is a really important, um, component to be considering. Um, students with I E Ps nineteen to sixteen percent. Um, and then like English language learners too, um, also has an impact on our school population and demographic information. So racial composition, um, students who, um, River Hills students who attend, um, Glendale River Hills are eighty-four point eight percent white. Um, seven point six percent Hispanic, seven point six percent two or more races. When I look at our school population, our percentage of students who, um, are white are forty-two point six percent, Maple Dale Indian Hills is seventy percent. So when we look at those components around diversity, we see a very clear delineation between our two districts in terms of the racial composition. Um, as was stated, both of our, um, school districts passed, uh, we passed a non-recurring, uh, two-year operational referendum. Maple Dale Indian Hill passed a recurring operational referendum. Both referendum approvals support the continuation of current operations, including programming, staffing and class sizes. So the state option number three is kind of talking about some of those options, I think Katie already addressed that as a board member. Um, open enrollment, the Wisconsin Milwaukee Parental Choice Program is an option, homeschooling is an option. So there are many other options available to families in the state of Wisconsin to make choices around their students' educations. Um, open enrollments is the main option for families seeking to choose, um, a public school in their area. Um, and then this exists as a mechanism for families looking to enroll in a non-resident district. So travel distances in terms of attendance, uh, for either district are equal distance. Um, both communities contain major intersections and a lack of sidewalks. Um, there will be little to no difference for academic programmings, both the districts work closely with Nicolay to articulate their curriculum and support success in high school. Um, there's little difference in achievement between students and Maple Dale Indian Hill and students from River, River Hills that attend Glendale River Hills. Class sizes have not increased and programs have not been cut as a result of a referendum. There is a financial impact that could alter curricular and extracurricular programming in G D H School District over time. And financially, it would decrease the taxes the petitioners pay and increase the taxes for community members with much less means in our school district. So just a kind of a summary tied to state, um, statutory criteria, when I look at all of these reasons. Um, the, the idea that we would not create spaces that are not contiguous is where I feel that it supports approval, these are the areas that support denial. And then my recommendation. Would be that we did have a petition to detach from the school district of Glendale River Hills to the Maple Dale Indian Hills School District for the reasons that I've presented.
Administration is also at time before he can ask a question.
Um, if you have a student who really wanted to learn something. Is there a way to accommodate that?
Yes. Um, we're very, our own talent development program, I've worked very closely with families and we've offered. Opportunities for students to do things outside of their normal science classes, because they're showing acceleration. We've had opportunities for students who, like, we've had some native Spanish speakers who are like, I don't wanna take Spanish, right? And so we might get them going on early online German, German class, so there are definitely ways that we can accommodate the very needs of our learners here.
That's my question to you, so I was thinking about an advanced perhaps French speaker or something that was identified.
Other questions? Our petitioners, another five minutes, if you have anything you'd like to add to your presentation or in rebuttal to what's been presented, is, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Oh, yeah, so I just wanted to share that I did attempt to contact Jenica Schick, um, twice. In October, um, just to see if there were any French offerings and kinda get the ball rolling. I did not, uh, receive response either time from that, so. Just so you guys know, I did attempt to reach out to that, and I think it was listed on one of the slides. And then I said a question, so for your, can you go back to the tax slide number?
In theory, we're good.
Okay, uh, so.
Pull it up to reference.
I think you said like the potential was. Um, a certain number.
Forty thousand three students, approximately.
This one?
So the. Yeah, the pretend the potential, so is the potential based off pupils? Uh, for the, so it's based off the three pupils versus like the five homes? Okay.
Yeah.
And so that is the. Tax credit. Plus the, what we pay, the taxes.
No, um, the state issues per pupil revenue spending for, and that's where revenue limits are set. So each student that attends our school district who's an in-residence student comes to us with thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-five cents attached to them. The taxes that you pay are in addition.
Okay, okay.
They help to fund that number, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then, I notice you said we, our taxes would be reduced, but with the recurring referendum, they would actually go up.
Oh, okay.
Over time, um. And then for the, um, for all the categories you had in the, um. Like, uh, Indian Hill, Maple Dale. Glendale River Hills and then the River Hills students attending G D R H. So we're not proposing all of the area in River Hills that compromise those students to be detached, it's justified parcels. So the three pupils, so I don't know how, how many pupils, do you know how many are from River Hills, if that's?
Yeah, I, I guess one of the things that, that I guess in response that I would wanna say is that. You were asking for five parcels, there's a possibility for that to be turned into a snowball effect, right? And what the demonstration that I wanna get at is that when we have students come to our district, they are performing well, right? Like that is a non-issue, giving a high quality education, the Glendale River Hills School District is comparable to Maple Dale Indian Hills, so that's, that's there.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You're looking, we're looking at about fifteen students right now that are coming from River Hills.
Okay.
I have more like a question, um, so you guys had noticed like the maps, like something was wrong with the maps maybe a couple of years ago, but. You know, like we used Shorewest to showcase so that we were told of the different school system, no, it's not necessarily like your guys' problem, but. Is that like rectified, like you were saying with Zillow?
Coldwell has corrected it, uh, I, Zillow had, has our district listed, Coldwell now has our district listed.
So if you go, if you scroll down on the page, um, and you go to these schools.
School information.
Yeah, that's where.
Glendale River Hills, I'm, I mean, I'm looking at it.
Oh, sure, can I come look at it?
Yeah. And then down.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's good school, so that's a separate, uh, website that brings schools. But in terms of the property details, the school information is actually our district.
Do you mind scrolling down to the group?
Yeah, yeah, so there's scores from good school.
Yeah, so that's, that's where it lists, so to the layperson. Right, that's what we're seeing, what, what, what school is listed on there?
It's not your fault and that's not our fault, right, so that's.
It is unfortunate.
It's, I mean, that sucks, but, um.
Yeah, and we actually found out about this process from someone on Pheasant Road, um, whose daughter. Uh, started going to Maple Dale Indian Hill and they discovered. Was it three or four years into it, uh, that she was in the wrong district, and so they allowed her to enroll to stay with her friends, um.
We've had that same issue happen with the portion at Glendale, it, it happens occasionally, we do verify addresses as part of our enrollment process. And our secretaries have big books, we always check stuff, but you know, it is possible to make those errors and when they come up. When they come up in an audit report, this is D P I does audit us on that, like that's how that information pans sometimes forward.
That might be more of a state legislative advocacy, like effort you might, you know, wanna look into.
Well, and like also like, I, like, just, we don't get your mail, so like, I would just say like, what has to happen to rectify that for the future?
Yeah.
I do have just a few, um, well, we're dealing with real numbers, so the students that you brought forward, your children, and thank you for. Kids are precious, right? You're advocating for your kids, that's your job as parents. My job as a school member is to advocate for the almost one thousand students in this district, that's just the truth of it, um. It's unfortunate, but it's not incumbent on the school district that websites selling houses get accurate data, that's just not. I understand. It's also unfortunate that the school district that you're not a resident on is sending you stuff, that's confusing, right? It's also unfortunate that the school district that you're not a resident on is sending you stuff, that's confusing, right? Oh, I hence, oh, and also right now, we're considering three, but this is five homes. Houses sell, the potential for other residents to move in who have children. Means that that's the nominal, that's the baseline number. That we have to consider today, right? But there's the potential for others.
Any final comments?
No.
No, I want to thank all of you for coming tonight and sharing your, your side of things and um having the board have an opportunity to listen to what also was prepared on the sun to help make an informed decision.
I don't believe there were any other public comments on this issue, right? Nobody else is prepared to comment on this tonight, so at this time I'm going to close the public presentation. The board is going to move into its regular meeting and as part of its regular agenda, will engage in discussion on this topic. So that's a few minutes down the road, if you'd like to, if you'd like to say, right? Um, so I'm going to turn it over to the board, it's time, and they'll proceed into their regular meetings, this closes the hearing.
Right, we're going to, does anybody need a break, two minutes or anything? Okay, let's keep it moving. Going to move and call the uh regular board meeting to order, I'm going to do a roll call, Karen Franwell, present. Uh, Chris Robinson, here. Diavolos, here. Danielle Bailey is here, Carla Pennington Cross.
Can you hear me?
Is here.
She's here, yeah, sorry.
We can't hear her. Should be like a webinar panelist or something?
If you take the time to figure that out, yeah.
Okay.
But I think the problem is because we have this hooked up and we would need my speakers. To pick up her, um, people that are panelists or attendees are hearing Carla speak, we are not.
Okay, she can message. She has something to interject or say instead of, okay, um. Okay, so roll call complete, if you'd like to stand for the pledge, may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to item one D. I need to improve the agenda, it's a second. Okay, there's a motion in the second, quick for the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the agenda is approved, any objections? No, okay, uh, moving on to item one E.
Move to approve the board minutes.
Second, there's a, um, motion to approve. The board meeting minutes of January twenty-ninth, twenty-four. Um, any discussion about the minutes? Oh, uh, for the minutes, or did you mean?
It's twenty-five, no, twenty-four.
Oh, thank you so much, that doesn't say, sorry.
Yeah, it's been a decade, right?
Good notes. Nope.
Yeah, we're seeing, we take some.
What are right? Um, okay. Computer's not working, okay, uh, and. We are going to move into item one F, which is our meeting grounding, and I just. Would ask you guys to, for one moment, um, I just want to quickly ground us in our um. Mission and our vision as we go through the rest of tonight's meeting, so reminding us that our uh district vision is a community that pursues equity, where each person belongs and thrives. Our mission is one of empowering growth, connection and success for all members of our learning community. And I want to just um put it out there, I think we're lucky to be in a district where those are not just words we say devoid of commitment or intentional action, but those are. Values and beliefs that we live and breathe to the best of our ability every day. Um, so as we go through tonight's agenda items, I want us to invite us to stay centered on why we are all here. Because we believe in the power of public schools to empower all students to grow, find belonging and connection, and also to achieve their highest. Potential academically and beyond. Specifically, we believe in the power of Glendale River Hills School System and our staff and our administrators, our students, our families and in this board to stay anchored in what matters most. Uh, to leave our egos at the door and honor the work of all the members of our learning community by committing to continuously grow and improve and collaborational with one another. With an eye toward the pursuit of equity in public education and beyond, and just. A reminder, we have created tools to help us do that, so we can lean on those, our equity lens, our equity non-negotiables. And just to encourage us to stay centered on those as we um go through our meeting and make decisions tonight. I don't have the ding, the bowl, sorry Carla, I don't have your, your singing bowl. Um, and now we will move on to the public comments portion, so at this time. I don't see anybody signed up for public comments, but if there are any public comments on any non-agenda item at this time, does anybody wish to? Anyone online? All right, well, we're going to gain some time back then, and we are going to move on to item three A, which is the petition to move school boundaries. Um, before we engage in board deliberate, well, I guess we should. Technically, we usually do a motion before we engage in discussion, but I feel like deliberation and discussion might be warranted prior to motion here. Yeah, okay, great. So let us do that now. I'm just gonna try to keep us centered on the statutory factors for consideration, we heard. Presentation from uh these lovely individuals tonight and we heard my administration, um. Does anybody want to, I mean, we could go through them, just.
Yeah, that would be fun.
We'll go through them? Okay, so the statutory factors, so looking at. I might do it, and I have that up, whatever.
Use my computer and we can share, we can help you.
Or, oh, um, no, it's okay. Um, okay. And Lauren, are you kind of allowed to help like?
Yeah, let's just, I mean, I guess I would open it to, are there any general comments the board members want to make before we start stepping through the individual factors?
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm moved by Anna's statement about the potential adverse monetary impact, and I'm more. I'm moved by the. Unknown of the future in terms of like, maybe you guys move in the next three years or nine years or something, and then someone else moves into your, you know, those parcels and. Right now, the state of um public finance education is. A nightmare, um, and it is, it is, that is just at the forefront of. My mind as we look to like advocate for our students to have equity in funding, to do something that. That, that potentially takes away from that, um. Feels hard for me, and it also feels like a vote of a lack of confidence in our district to meet your children's needs. I, I don't understand the, I mean, I, it looks to me like geographically. There are awkward paths to and from both schools, crossing like Port Washington or Major, but you know. Um, so those are some of the things that are at the forefront of my mind, that, yeah. Understanding, you know what's best for your kids, right? Um, but I don't know that your kids are always going to live in those properties. Um, and I know that there are other options. That would not, would have a lesser adverse impact on our students. Which are you guys right now, you know, like that would, but yeah. Those are my thoughts.
Anybody else want to make?
Others extremely similar to Danielle's, like, and you mentioned that you have a retired family living in one of those homes. Odds are that one will turn over in the next decade, probably before your kids are done with school, and will those be more kids that we're moving out on? Um, and I do see it as, I like, I think our district is a really special district, and I think kids are kind of privileged to go here, it's. You saw the demographic makeup, I, that makes for some really strong kids coming out of these schools. Um, and I, I really like that, and I don't want to necessarily take that away from Lauren, maybe visit. Either, but they would then have to try to open enrollment back in here when it's voted last meeting to close open enrollment for next year, so it might not even be an option. So that's kind of what I'm thinking.
I feel for you, I, I really do, um, and it makes me wonder what we can do proactively with real terms in the future. Um, to kind of help everybody get accurate.
And also make sure you guys get our mail. That doesn't make sense to me.
Um. I also say that I think my daughter probably got into her dream college in part. Because of her experience with diversity care. And that she is able to. And enjoys and embraces working, building and being friends with people that are different for her, with, from her. And that helped her with her culture mate situation, it helps her on, it helps her every day. And I remember one time, whereas I was not being a really good parent, and I was grumbling about some interaction I had with somebody. I can't remember, but she said, mom, everybody's got a story. And I know she learned that here. That empathy, that, that um perspective-taking, it's like that, that sends her.
Yeah.
Yeah, just going to do that, yeah.
All right, I think we're good now.
Okay, um.
I just need to share.
Oh, are we recording? Give me a thumbs up.
We are recording, which is weird, after we lost it, it's still recording.
Okay, all right, so I'm just, so Carla, who. Having technical difficulties, I'm just gonna read a statement in for her, she would like to acknowledge the petitioner's worries. Um, you had an expectation for a particular school district and have been shocked to learn you'll be in the Glendale River Hills, Hills School District unless you use choice options. Um, but she doesn't think that you've presented a valid rationale under the statute for detachment. Uh, she knows our district to be full of warm, friendly families who are ready to make friends, I think these families can find welcome and connection with us. I think we can meet any of the petitioner's kids' needs for accelerated learning in French through individualized instructions similar to what they would be offered at Mapledale. That's her comment, and then I just wanted to add, in terms of Jenica not responding to you, I, she has been out for some time in the fall, she was out on leave. But also October was insane for our administration as we ramped up for a referendum, so I apologize, you know, just that you were not, that um. Followed up on, but I don't, I think that at this point she would, will be following up with you if you still want to talk to her. Um, okay. Do you think we have gone through the statutes?
To, let's step through.
Okay, step through, okay.
So the first one is geographical top graph characteristics of the school districts, estimated travel time. And to and from each school, that we're proposing.
Yeah.
Comments from anybody as to how that factor falls, anything you want to document for the record on that factor. Again, for the appeal record, it is important that we address each factor individually, so that's why I'm asking that we go through each.
Okay, so I, I think both sides addressed that factor well and has similarly agreed that. Uh, that travel time, et cetera, is equidistant, I did not find anything presented that showed me. Um, that confirmed a lack of, uh, or a dissimilarity between, uh. Lack of sidewalks or major crossroads or walks that would really inhibit your kids in either district, um. I just, I didn't find anything compelling in the record for that, I think could bike both ways, probably encounter. Similar situations, um. I'm not sure, but I didn't, that didn't come out for me in the record, so. Anyone else have comments on? Travel? Yes.
Educational needs of the children residing in the school districts and the programs offered by each district. How many says to that?
Chris, for you.
Um, the, you know, the. You know, the family obviously wants, you know, a friend, a French program, um, and we do not offer French. Um, it sounds like the French program that is offered there is a language program. That is largely online with some teacher support for, for projects. Um, and, um, you know, there, there may exist the ability to differentiate for a student with high interest.
Right, you could probably.
And if the need arose, we could probably have access to that same programming.
Uh, one, one other thing that, you know, as a, as children are growing up in a situation where people are speaking to them in that language. By the time they get to middle school. I'm not sure how much more they would gain. From an intro language program.
Right. Okay.
Um. Three, adverse impact on the curriculum and extracurricular aspects of the programs offered by the district.
I think the monetary impact was laid out um by both, that there will be a detrimental impact, I think. It's unknown to even see what the future is, but it would, at minimum, there would be an adverse monetary. Impact on our district by losing three pupils and potentially more.
Testimony of those who've presented today? How many told me testimony?
Grateful for them, definitely grateful for your advocacy, um. Grateful for the administration putting together the, the data that you did, the interesting history, I think, though. Um, but not a. I don't know.
Precise value either way.
Yeah, yeah. I, I.
I think it's clear to me that, that, um, you believed one thing and something else happened, and, um. That, um, you did the best you could with the information that you had available, you know, you know, that makes me feel really bad, so, um. And I also appreciated the, the break, I had not, the, the breakdown of River Hills students.
Right.
Um, was, was interesting, and so, thanks for that.
Yeah, I, I would say that, that record too is also compelling in terms of looking at how economic advantage, when you pull kids in that have that economic advantage and, and. Are doing well on those test scores, that that helps to raise our overall score. and and are doing well on those test scores, that that helps to raise our overall scores, like as a logistic thing, and it also just, it also must just raise learning for everybody, right? When you have kids coming in. So I noticed that in your presentation, you talked about like how it doesn't have an impact because we're not losing diversity, but we are, we would be. Um, and I think that that is also important diversity to have in the district. Sorry, you guys are like so, I'm sorry. I know, I'm sorry, but just.
No, I mean, we.
This is for the record, we have to, we have to go through this.
stigma of our River Hills, um, you know, we have the two small.
No, that's not, no, 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 sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Um, fiscal impact, effective reimbursement assets, my ability is specific commentary on that fiscal piece. I know we're darn near.
That is an essential component to our consideration. Um, the potential loss of taxpayer funding is a significant concern when we are looking at how the state chooses to fund our public school systems. We do appreciate you guys are public school fans, like, that's fabulous. Um, but again, design, we have to keep that in mind.
Element six is the contiguous non-convivial nature of the property. I'm going to put a reference. Uh, I think, I think we all agree that that.
Right.
That definitely.
That's a factor, yeah. Yeah.
Um, number seven, socioeconomic and ratio composition impact.
Um, that was addressed in Anna's presentation, I feel like, pretty thoroughly. Um, so I guess if you needed a record, you could go to that. But again, I I think. But, well, I don't know, is there any upcoming on that, whether?
Results of the referendum. Number eight. How it impacts the findings.
Oh, like if we hadn't passed, if we were struck with.
Right.
Well, to the point, the referendum. Shifts to other taxpayers, like the referendum doesn't go down.
Okay, are there any other factors the board considers in this decision?
No, but can I say something? I just, you know, you mentioned stigma against River Hills. Um, I I live in River Hills and I think what you're hearing is that we would value your families here at the district. I'm sorry if if we came across collectively as having a stigma against River Hills, but.
I think a lot of it had to do when, when you dropped off the petition, uh, she was told it would not be accepted. Um, and they directed her to Glendale, uh, the city of Glendale. And they turned around and said, it clearly says on the petition like this has to be accepted by the school district. And you had to work really hard to get um the clerk.
Yeah, to clarify, it was no one in this room.
Yeah, but to to get them to accept it, and she was like, well, no one's gonna sign this.
It's meant with a lot of resistance. I'm sorry.
And, and some, and I commented a lot with like, oh, you're just a person from River Hills trying to get, and it's like, for us, that, that's why we wanted it to be really clear, that's not what our argument is. And it really bugs us that that's, that it was perceived that way. And so, you know.
Yeah.
But you just ask that you keep that in mind, like, for us, it's, it's, it's not about the one school versus another school.
Yeah. Yeah, we can appreciate that. Sorry you have that experience.
Yeah.
But I wasn't able to speak. I have words.
Yeah, but maybe, I don't know, I am on something, you can.
Yeah, absolutely noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. So if there's other comments from the board at this point, the board is free to make a motion. And how they want to proceed.
I have a a sample motion language for anybody who wants to make a motion. If, I don't think it should be me. Which? Give me a second, she's got two options. Alright, um, I motion to deny the transfer of territory described in the, oh wait. In the petition and adopt a corresponding resolution that's a reorganization requested in the petition filed, is this the right thing? Um, September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, to detach territory described in said petition from the Glendale River Hill School District and to attach it to the Mapledale and name it with those school districts be denied and that the corresponding order be issued and said petition be dismissed. So. Second, second. So there's currently a motion and a second to deny the transfer of territory as stated by Katie Evans. Um, we can do a roll call, but any further discussion, any, do I need to do any? Okay.
Just make sure we know how Carla is going to vote.
Right, okay. Let's see. Uh, okay, so we'll do a roll call vote, uh, current chronicle. Oh, wait, this is a motion to deny, meaning. I say yes. Correct.
The motion, if you approve.
Um, I, uh, Chris Robinson.
Hi.
Katie Avalos.
Hi.
Carla, uh, Pennington Cross.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, okay, votes aye. And Danielle Bailey votes aye, meaning the motion uh to deny this pass unanimously. Uh, do you have a, no, I don't think she has a copy of the resolution. Yeah, is it, okay. Thank you for coming. We're willing to work with you and. Yeah.
Sure, yeah, if I could just ask of you, as Jenica, hand you back.
Actually, it's back to.
No, that, that's all good.
Geez.
Sounds good, thank you.
Jen, was I talking to you? You were just like in the. See you, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I am just going to save like a three or four minute recess before we dive into DAP, is that okay? I just, yeah, give me the, okay. Um, no objections?
No objections.
Okay, so seven seventeen, or that clock says seven twenty one, how about seven twenty five on that clock? Which is like four minutes. Is that okay?
What time is it actually? Seven seventeen, so let's plan on coming back at seven twenty two.
Great, perfect, thanks, yep. Okay, Carla is moving, I guess.
Moving, but just deliver it.
Soon it's not.
I'm scanning, what'd you get? Okay, I am, but, um, but you want to stand?
Uh, so, uh, so I didn't see you there. I was like, I was trying to, I thought you were being like very, just like, very professional and.
Oh, no, but I also just, I made that point and I was like.
Absolutely, for the record, okay. All right, we are going to uh resume the meeting, call the meeting back to order. And, crap, there's someone, okay. Um, Carla Pennington Cross is now excused, she's no longer on Zoom. And we are gonna move on to item four A, which is the DAP survey results.
Alright, hi, everybody. I'm here to present to the school board the result of the developmental assets profile survey that was administered to students at Glen Hills Middle School. This is in alignment of the strategic pillar of whole child growth and success. My plan is not to give you a presentation. I will just, I have slides up here to reference, just so we can co-reference slides in case there are questions, okay?
Yep.
So essentially, um, I submitted a board report um with the developmental assets profile results. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about the DAP survey. I'm going to provide you with an overview of the DAP survey and then I'll share with you what we did with the results of that survey with our, with our staff. And that includes looking at the composite scores, also looking at the internal and external developmental assets scores, context scores, and then provide you with some next steps um that our staff helped to gather, okay? So the developmental assets survey is a research-based survey. So it's a profile for our students to fill out. It was administered to all students um in the, at Glen Hills Middle School. For all students had an opportunity to complete the survey. Um, again, it is, does not provide standardized score. So it's a survey, students respond to statements on a Likert scale, which include like, I agree with this, I strongly agree, I agree, I disagree, I strongly disagree. Okay, the developmental assets, um, the search institute kind of runs the survey information for us and they give the information to us in a number of different views or a number of different books, okay? Um, I wanna make sure I share with you, there were some questions about the number of students that took the survey. This has some longitudinal information, but you can see on this slide the number of students that were surveyed by grade level. This year, eighty-six percent of the surveys were what the search institute, or eighty-six students, eighty-six surveys were scrubbed. Um, and what they mean by that is there were responses on those surveys that were maybe inconsistent. Maybe they were missing data on six or more items, so they just skipped items. They might have reported that they were in a grade level that is not in attendance at Glen Hills Middle School. So um if they noticed those things, those surveys were then scrubbed. I cannot provide a ton more detail than that, other than that they use their, like, sis, their quality systems with, with what they do with that data and determine what gets scrubbed. We do not determine that, that's actually institute's stuff, that. Okay. Um, I also want to highlight this key, uh, because in the board report I provided you with some color coding. Um, this slide presentation is linked in the report you received, just so you know. Uh, but this key is essentially your legend, so it shows you what students presented with a challenged set of assets, a vulnerable set of ad, assets, an adequate set of assets, and what we would consider a thriving set of assets, which would be like the highest level, okay? The reason we're looking at assets is because we know that when students have assets present in their lives, that their outcomes are higher. So we know that students will do better in school, they'll be better prepared for post-high school experiences, they'll contribute more to their communities and society, and they will avoid high-risk behaviors, okay? That is the research the DAP people at the search institute have done to kind of root this survey within that research, okay? So, we were able to look at the survey in a number of different ways, and this is also how we shared it with staff. So the first way the survey displayed the data for us was with composite scores, okay? So this, this is a visual representation of the composite asset scores that um we gathered in the survey and then organized um those into the different categories that we listed, so from challenged up to thriving, okay? The scale for the composite asset scores, because it takes all of the assets and creates a composite score, is linked on this slide, so you can see how, how that was organized, okay? Also on this slide is some more longitudinal data, so you can see, you know, how the metric has moved here. When we presented this um with staff, some of our key takeaways um really were that there were some slight changes, um, we saw some more students pop from um into that challenged range. So we moved from nine percent students um presenting with a, a challenged set of assets to eleven. Um, and we lost some students in that vulnerable range from forty-one to forty. And then if we were to add adequate and challenge, about forty-nine percent of our students overall are reporting that they have it adequate to the riding set of assets available. We then um offered for staff to look at, to look at cohort data because we like to see how students are progressing over time. And so we did spend a significant amount of time um allowing staff to take a look at cohort data. And how are our students progressing as they move through the grade levels? So I tried to take a box and put it around so you can kind of see how they're grouped. And um some of the overall trends we see, and I'm sure you see that, is um sometimes our students' assets kind of decline over time. And one of the questions was, is that typical? It is. Um, and we kind of, you know, and I don't know how many people in front of me are parents of middle schoolers, but we do see kids golden developmentally to a stage where they are questioning everything. Um, and this happens and the research supports that, that this kind of happens. Um, this decline in scores as children age, and then they hit a point in time where they increase again. Um, so there is research to support that.
What's the point in time where they tend to increase?
Um, twelfth grade. But we do see, we do see pockets move and change and grow, and it is really important for staff to kind of see where are some grade levels where we might actually see some of this data play out in real life, right? Okay, um, I will say that for some of our staff, the data, the data was essentially affirming. Um, like some of the needs they might be seeing in cohorts of students that were, was this the affirming. Um, and then we took those composite scores and we broke them um out across demographics because we feel um that anytime we're looking at data, we do our best to look at it through this lens as well. Um, so our staff spent some time kind of looking through this data. The percentages that are, the percent that are in parentheses are last year's scores for that demographic group, just to kind of give you a point of reference, okay? Um, we did see um some happy growths, we saw things kind of shift and move. One of the questions I wanted to respond to was, why is there not, no data for last year, the Hispanic category? There weren't enough, there wasn't enough representation for the students that identified as Hispanic that took the survey. Um, so that would be why, because it's not enough students to represent that group of students.
Okay, can I, yes, please. Just to clarify, Kelly, um, students self-identify in this test, so they're, they're, the way that they identify is a self-identification, so it doesn't always match necessarily the demographics that we see in our sys system or with our forward testing, since it's not pulled directly from our student information system. So it's self-identification.
Is it um like multiple choice, or they, it's like a fill-in-the, like they?
It is multiple choice.
Choice. Yeah, pretty comprehensive choices.
Um, yeah, comprehensive choices, but I wanted to like point out that other is a choice. And, right, that's not a choice in our student information system, and we, like, we don't know what that means to students, although I, I, Anna and I were talking about this, well, if you felt like you were in another, how are your scores gonna come out, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, yes. So after we looked at it from the composite lens, then we looked at, at it from an assets lens, okay? And it, we honed in on specific assets. They're divided into two categories, external assets, so those are assets available external to the child, and internal assets, okay? Assets we know that we can grow within children. And internal assets, okay, assets we know that we can grow within children, okay? And then it popped scores to, based on their scale, based on. Students and what category they fell in, so again, our categories are here. Challenged, vulnerable, adequate, thriving. Okay, um, just to lay that side by side against previous years. You can kind of see, we have some categories that are popping, right? Um, out of that adequate range and into the challenged range. Um, but those, like, the percentage is very small, I think it's that when, when it hits the, the score twenty. Is when it pops down a category um, under the number twenty.
Wait, can you, so. Uh, this was confusing to me, the purple, it, the purple correlates with the, the category, the purple category? And that's a percentage?
No.
That's just a score that belongs into, out of what? What's like, what, is it a range for that?
I'll show you, okay, I have a key right here.
Okay, so it's a, okay. Okay. Okay, got it.
Yep, okay, yep, and it's confusing, I know, because a composite score is a different range, this is the asset score, okay? Okay, so some of the information um, that we identified here were, okay, let's look at where our strengths are. Um, based on these assets and because our strengths are opportunities to grow on, right? Um, that's our leverage point, so we know that um, support is a strength. We know that boundaries and expectations are strength, that's great. And then if we look at what are some of the weaker areas um, within our student population? Positive identity, commitment to learning, constructive use of time. Now those are tricky, so I always like to go back and look at how they define those things, right? So constructive use of time, for us, we always think, well, they're not using their time well. But the way it's defined on the survey, young people need opportunities outside of school to learn and develop new skills and interests. With other youth and adults, okay? So, thinking about as a staff, what can we do to give our students opportunities outside of school, right? Another weak area was positive identity and historically that's been a low one for us. Positive identity is described as young people need to believe in their own self-worth. And feel they have control over the things that happen to them. And then another internal asset that popped this year was commitment to learning. Young people need a sense of the lasting importance of learning and a belief in their own abilities.
Are four questions that um, that go to that score. Involved in a church or religious group, involved in a sport club or other group. Involved in creative things such as music or spending quality time at home with my parents when we do things together, that's it? Doesn't that seem like not an adequate way to assess whether someone's having, like?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So I think an important thing to, to take into consideration when we're looking at this and any other metric. That we look at in, in the scope of education is to really think about the fact that. The, the method of an educator is to examine data, to make a plan, you know?
Yeah.
Study, like, what does this mean, why, why are some of these things looking the way they are? Then we try something and we continue to measure, but we can't look at, ever look at one metric, because we're dealing with the complexity of human beings. Right, and it's dangerous to do so, we know that, right?
It's why it's hard to kind of process and receive this information out of the context of all the other metrics you use, right, there, that's why it's.
So to kind of couch this historically, that Kelly and I talked about this, in twenty twenty-one after the pandemic, I think a decision was made. With our partner districts to, to use this assessment across our three partner districts as well as Nicolay. So that we could look for, like, where are we meeting, what, what might we need to be doing in our schools, how can we work together and collaborate around that work? So that was the impetus behind giving this, this one measure, but it's one measure of many that we look at as a school community at Glendale River Hills, right?
Yeah, yeah, we agree, it's imperfect and no measure is ever going to be perfect. So it's a piece of information, it is not all of the information and should not define us. Um, in total, I mean, at all, um, but it's important information for us to have and we need to do something with it, so. Um, the next area I'd like to highlight here um, are the exploration of the five contexts. For building developmental assets, so it looks at those internal assets, those external assets which you just saw. These are the contexts by which students or youth are able to build those assets. And it's, it's in five different contexts, so personal assets, that's giving a nod. To students have internal strengths that they shape their own character. And sometimes I feel like we don't give students enough for the work they do to develop their own character. Social assets, okay, family assets, school assets and community assets. So we might wanna look at those contexts, where are we strong? And again, what do we need to leverage to grow some of those internal or external assets for students? So um, this is how we scored this school year. Um, our lowest category this year was the school content, which is different than last school year or the previous. Um, after that was personal. And then community, so historically, personal and community have been low. And um, school um, has um, not always been, I mean, it's always been third, but now it's kind of popped um, into that challenge. So, as a staff, that's really what I wanna talk about is, is what we did with, with this data, so this was presented to the staff. And they had an opportunity to look at it, um, pour through the data and then they met in like. Grade level content teams and they asked questions. They poured through the data, they provided some I wonders, some things they think we need to shift and adjust because of this. Um, and which helped us, you know, really shape some, some next steps here. Um. Adjustments were made to our Wellness Wednesday schedule and this was. Part of what we talked about as a staff that we wanna look at and um, and potentially adjust. And I can quickly describe that, I don't wanna go like too deep into it, but Wellness Wednesdays. Are the days we deliver our universal self-curriculum through Second Step. Last school year, um, we had like, almost like a rotating schedule and the idea was we can't side all this, we can't have one. Person that works with these students, hold this language and hold this vocabulary, we need to share, we need to share the love. Across keep the people that are touching all of our children. Um, that was, that was legitimately a challenge for teachers and they identified that because it was really hard when a lesson attached to the previous lesson. Um, so this school year, the idea was on Wellness Wednesdays, we're gonna provide that universal cell instruction. At the end of each school day and we're gonna shorten um, the content classes by a few minutes each one. So that we've got a nice chunk of time at the end of the day on Wednesdays to deliver that cell instruction. Very good thinking, very good planning and it all made sense to everybody until we did it. And then, and then, and it falls forward, like, it is okay, right, because this is, this is challenging to get in. Um, but I'll just kind of describe the challenges essentially. Students, by the time they get to the end of their day, mentally, they just finished their last class of the day. And they're like, ready to go and so our adjustment was to move it from the end of the day. To the beginning of the day, so that the last class actually feels like the last class, so that's our adjustment, it was not a huge. Um, it was not a huge deal, um, and I think mostly positive um, results because of that adjustment. Um, Student Services team is presenting some ongoing, we are calling them micro moves. And micro moves because we know that best practice with delivering. Cell instruction is that it doesn't just happen at the beginning of the day on Wednesdays, it's supposed to be woven throughout the content. Throughout your instruction daily. And there are some great strategies that our Student Services team is sharing with classroom teachers that don't feel like a major shift for them. Their micro moves are small things they can do to layer in some very purposeful moves to kind of move the dials with some of that. Um, an example, I'll, I can give you a couple examples of micro moves. One of those might be how you greet your students when they enter your space. And what that should look like and what that should feel like and how we want our students to feel when they enter our spaces. Another micro move, um, essentially, one of the micro move was just listing. The cell standard they're practicing during that lesson. So the students might be collaborating with one another and the teacher is going to say, while you're doing this, just so you know, you are working on. This skill, right? And putting it out there and being very purposeful, that these are skills we're growing in you while you're learning that content. Um, so that's been great, the Student Services team has been great about that. Um, we are being very purposeful at looking at some other cell indicators with the EduClimber tool. And I know there's a lot of questions about EduClimber tool, we can definitely maybe do that in a data session.
Yeah.
Um, or something like that and talk about what that looks like. Um, staff are looking at the data and really the data is only as good as the, the information that's put in there by staff. But we're looking at things like attendance, classroom managed incidents, office managed incidents. And the EduClimber platform allows us to look at that by subgroups, we can look at that by. Race and ethnicity, we can look at that by time of the day or day of the week, that can really help us identify. Oh my goodness, Wednesdays are not so well. And, you know, make some adjustments, or it might help us identify some hotspots in the day. When students are transitioning and we might be more supervision available. Um, so that's really helping us make student decisions using data, right? And then um, the.
Sorry, can you, can you track like the DAP scores of, or the depth, like? Oh, no, in, in EduClimber, okay.
No, and, and there, it's only once a year and so in terms of like. responsiveness or feeling like I wanna know, like, how I'm impacting students, I don't like. Like in the moment, so we can make adjustments to the schedule, I made adjustments to the micro moves, this isn't the, this isn't the measure.
Yeah, just saying more about the year over year, like how you can.
Yeah, to clarify though, those scores are not attached to individual students.
It's, okay.
Right, so it's, it's pulling survey information in as anonymous, so it isn't like, uh, you know, Annie Young has a score attached to her. Like I go into EduClimber, where EduClimber is designed to track specific student information, okay, yeah.
Um, this spring, we are going to engage in a um. Social emotional learning curriculum review, um, and that is another um, big step, um, we're going to be taking. Um, we are hearing and we did ask for feedback from staff about Second Step, like in conjunction with Wellness Wednesday, so they had so much to say. And um, like, there is no universal self-curriculum that's perfect. We know that Second Step is research-based, we know that it's evidence-based. Um, but we also know that it, it can feel kind of canned and um, and it. Staff can make it, make it what they want to also, um, but it, it deserves some time and attention and looking into, so that is a process we're gonna be going through as well. Our plan is to engage students in that process, we're um, planning to have some student focus groups um, to hear from our students. And our plan is also to engage um, families um, through focus group as well. Those are our next steps.
Is that just our district, or are you, like, do, are we the only of our partner districts that use Second Step, or there?
Um, I'm, Mapledale Indian Hill also uses Second Step currently, like light, they add some of their own things into it.
Oh, okay.
Um, and we're, we were trying to use it with more fidelity, just to see what the results were of that, right? Um, although our, our social emotional learning team and our SST team has built in some other additional pieces when we see need based on what we're seeing with data. Like if there's an uptick in, you know, students using like. Inappropriate language towards one another, we might do some SEL lessons on that, so we can get after that.
Yeah.
Um, the work that I've been doing with the partner districts is we've always kind of had this continued focus on SEL since the pandemic, so. Um, each of our districts oftentimes selects different curriculums. But we identify standards that are aligned, SEL is not necessarily an area where we've developed priority standards, but we are all utilizing the Wisconsin State. Um, social emotional learning standards as a, as a marker. And I think all of the districts are examining SEL curriculums right now to kind of determine what fits their context best.
Yeah.
Um, Fox Point Bayside is like selected one and is, I think, in year two of their, their process of implementation. Um, and I think Mapledale Indian Hill and Nicolay and us are all in this kind of exploration phase right now.
Or, have any questions or comments for Kelly or?
I, I have a question. Um, and again, I know e- every instrument doesn't do everything, but, and I appreciate the disaggregated data. Has there been any talk of the, among the institute of, of um, also being able to disaggregate students with disabilities?
Yeah.
Or students that identify as LGTVQ?
From the Search Institute, um, I, I have not asked about. Giving students an opportunity to identify whether or not they're a student with a disability.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I am not sure, but I can check.
Yeah, and I don't even know if that's a good thing, but just as I looked at the positive identity scores, I just wondered.
Well, sorry, yeah, that, like, thinking about um, involvement in a religious group being a positive marker for a kid. May not be positive for some kids who identify where that becomes a challenge for them, right? So that makes me question the, the lens of the, but I looked at the, they're more very diverse, right? Like, it seems like they're, they have a focus on equity and whatnot, but. Uh, again, everything is, is imperfect, so.
Um, right, yeah. It's interesting. It is interesting, yeah, thank you. And I want, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, it's late, so.
Oh, yeah.
I guess, looking at the trends, we've always been purple and orange.
Yeah.
Um, do we, not that I want to necessarily compare other districts, but that is why we do this, is to have comparison. How do those scores align? I mean, where do our students fall compared to other districts?
Okay, I, I do wanna be very careful in comparing, but I will tell you that. Our lowest categories almost always align.
Okay.
So especially positive identity and constructive use of time. That is consistent, like if I'm looking at where are you really low, um. So, some may have less orange and more purple than us.
Okay.
Okay, um, and I will say that, and we are meeting tomorrow, so I haven't seen like. Everybody's like data, data, but we do dive into it, I think I'm the first one to present to their school board, so. Um, but, but we will look at it um, through a deeper lens tomorrow. Um, and we'll talk about whether or not we think DAP is something we should continue with, I, I really like having like longitudinal information, but. Um, it, it's good information.
Is there a feedback loop for, for instance, to talk about like, those four questions? Do seem kind of limited and maybe not reflective of the cultural practices these days, like. There's a trend away from practicing faith, so why would that be? It doesn't seem representational necessarily of the broader social consciousness.
Right.
Um, I, I just wanna like also add in there that I pulled a report that I can share with the board as well as part of my weekly update. That comes from the Search Institute that looks at the twenty twenty-four results as a whole across the nation. You can, you can, like, the larger sampling size, um, I do think it's tricky to, to compare, right? I think looking at that larger sampling size can give us some better um, feedback around where we sit.
Yeah, and to be clear, I just wanted, I mean. You know, are we an outlier, like, because that's my major concern, that's like. Do we have, we, we are consistent in a lot of ways.
Right, but the things that aren't identified in this particular survey in terms of like socio-economics. Right, but the things that aren't identified in this particular survey in terms of like socioeconomic status, disability, I.
I understand.
Right, like, I think that's where you want to be careful. But is the, just the YRBS was mentioned at the WASB convention a lot? Is that like a, a counter to, is that like a similar survey that schools use, or?
We did talk about that, um, because other, other systems do use that. We also don't want to over-survey our students.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I feel as though we would need to do one or the other.
Hmm.
Um, and YRBS, ah, I don't think it goes as low, right, I don't think it goes as low as fourth grade. I want to say it's really.
No, I don't.
On six and up, um, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's correct, because I think maybe it could, and then it's also as high school, right? So, yeah, okay. Uh, in the interest of time, I do want to thank you, and I think this is part of an ongoing conversation. We can have our own data, students, right? So we don't, it doesn't end here necessarily, like, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, I'm sorry, visitors, anyone on, anyone? Questions from online? Is Mr. Martin here?
Mr. Martin is here, and.
Fine, okay, um, I'm just going to move on to the item five A, uh, can we approve this tonight? I, I mean, it's designated for action, and I know that the document's only in.
Mr. Martin has no question.
Oh, thanks, it's, okay, um, I'm just, like, point of order.
Yeah, because it was, we, we was cited that way.
Great, okay, great, okay, so, um, is, does anybody want to make a motion to? And then we could do a quick discussion.
I'm going to approve the Black History Month resolution.
Okay. Okay, okay. Uh, so there's a motion to approve, and a second to approve the Black History Month, uh, re- resolution for twenty twenty-five. And in terms of discussion, I just, um, want to maybe just read the, the, the resolve. I don't know, I mean, this is Black History Month, we have the Black History Month program coming up on February twenty?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, and I do believe that, uh, we'll maybe get a chance to hear from administration about what Black History Month, you know, looks like in various classrooms down the line, so, um, I just want to, um, encourage folks to, you know, read this resolution once it's up and, um, encourage everybody in our learning community to, you know, offer or participate in meaningful and appropriate activities that honor the collective experiences of Black Americans who, as we know, have profoundly enriched and strengthened the fabric of our multicultural democracy. Um, so all that being said, are there any objections to approving the Black History Month, uh, twenty twenty-five resolution? No, then it is approved, I look forward to the program and hearing about activities in our schools at a later time. Anyone online, any questions?
Wouldn't you like me to move the file into?
No, sure, sure, that'd be great. Um, all right, gonna move on to item six A, legislative update. In the interest of time, would anybody object to us just maybe moving this item or tabling it? Or do we want to go through it kind of, we could do it quickly too, I don't know. Um, okay, I think, or let's just say this, legislative updates, uh, school board members attend, and staff attended the WASB convention. We have a Google shared, uh, folder that we can deposit materials that we got from the convention to learn, and I would, I have suggested to Carla and Anna that we think about a way to like share out or share in and at a different time, in terms of like, just, you know, there's a lot of good stuff, and, um, and Chris, was there anything from the delegate that was like, that of note, like, the, your?
Okay.
Um, most of the resolutions that we discussed passed. Um, the one about sponsoring Paris with removing the bachelors did not pass. And again, this is just WASB's legislative priorities.
Yeah.
And, um, the other one that, um, did not pass, which we didn't want to pass, was the, um, the school board that wanted the state report card to only work on achievement and not give any credit for growth. That did not pass.
Well, thank you.
Okay, and, um, I will just note, actually, the Education Committee is convening their first meeting tomorrow. It's not Zoomed, it's in person in Madison, and they're going to be discussing five education bills, um, one of which has to do with the funding for Act Twenty. There's a Republican legislator who is, um, trying to make sure that the money does not end up in the rainy day fund that's been allocated for Act Twenty.
Hmm.
Um, and so there may be some worker advocacy or letter, right, some things we could do around that. Um, so that's just something we can, to keep on our radar. Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then, um, today I listened to, um, a webinar, um, by the ACLU that gave some ideas.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so, um, I will share those out as a.
Awesome.
Thank you. But it's, it, I felt good that we were doing, like, the right things.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna move on to item six B, which is a closed session. Would anybody like to read that motion into the record?
I already did one, guys. All right, I'm going to recess into closed session per section nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion compensation performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has juris-
Took one fast. A second. Okay, there's a motion, and a second to move into recess, to close session, due to section nineteen eighty-five one C specifically to discuss management of contracts. Uh, do a roll call vote, uh, Katie Avalos?
Aye.
Uh, Chris Robinson?
Aye.
Craig Grunell?
Aye.
Dana Bailey votes aye, so we are now moving into closed session. Uh, should we move your office?
Do you want to say anything about what's going to happen after we?
Um, when we come back, we reconvene into open session, no action will be taken. I think it's safe to say, and a debrief of adjournment, so, we won't miss. And close, uh, there will be no action, so we'll move on to meeting closing. Anybody have comments, uh, thoughts about this meeting? What?
Can I share?
Please.
So what I find noticing is that this is the, um, because we've adjusted the meeting to accommodate the WASB and choir and choral concerts, right? Which is really important for you guys to be, I think one of our, one of my noticing is having back-to-back without two weeks in between for the board to be able to review items is really tricky. And so, I think in our future planning, I would recommend that we always have a, a little bit of a gap going on there so that there's adequate turnaround time for information to get to you to, you be thoughtful about being able to review it, so.
Yeah.
I was, I was trying to like get a feel of what's different this time, and that's what it is, and so we just have to be, uh, like, I think it's just an important learning, uh, growth moment for all of us.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, and I would just thank everybody for their hard work and thoughtfulness tonight. Um, presentation, Anna, that you gave of not hearing this, just really comprehensive and, um, it helped a lot, because I was nervous not having had materials to review going into it, and it was great to have Lauren here, so I just appreciate that. It was really well organized, well presented.
Minus the time allotment for the hearing.
It worked out, it worked out, it's fine. He didn't know how much.
I think I said that.
Organized, yeah.
Organized.
Okay, anything else? Anyone? All right, is there a motion, she's adjourned? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joel.